Good evening, North Brunswick Township. This meeting is now being called to order. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori. Dr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Ms. Toth. And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is October 29th, North Brunswick Township Board of Education's regular meeting. I will be chairing tonight's meeting in Ms. Toth's absence. And we are going to start with the board president's statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner: Posted on the bulletin board reserved for announcements in the board office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, New Jersey, 08902; mailed to the home news Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the clerk of the township of North Brunswick; and delivered to the nine duly-elected board members. Good evening, everyone, again. Welcome to our regular meeting. We are happy to see so many wonderful faces tonight. We've got a lovely agenda. And a highlight of tonight's meeting is that we are going to be honoring some of our exceptional staff and students. And so with that, I'm going to have our superintendent, Dr. Zakowski, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Good evening, everyone, and millions of viewers in TV land, and we're on TV, so I just want to make sure we wave, say hello. Our first presentation is really something special. They'll be highlighted in all of our bulletins, in our website, but we felt it was very important to do it publicly and recognize both. I'm gonna say, I hope I get this right, Anye, I'm gonna make you pronounce my last name, Anye and Tene Obakia, Kie, Kie. Is that pretty good? Oh, that's great. And they are here because they were selected for the Governor's STEM Scholars Program, which is not only an unusual high honor, but for two sisters to get it from the same school. And with us tonight, before we do a formal presentation and resolution to permanently put in our records, so like from 20 years from now, when people don't believe that you did this, you could go back to the permanent minutes and test it. But I'm gonna ask our assigned supervisor, Ms. Janine Laffeer, to come up and say a few words about these wonderful students, and then the president, the vice president and I will say something.
Good evening, Dr. Zakowski, the Board of Education, and the community of North Brunswick. I cannot begin to tell you how difficult it must have been for the Governor's STEM Scholars Committee to choose students. I can tell you, we had, just from our high school, a number of very highly-qualified students, and I am so glad I did not have to make the decision. However, they made a decision, and they chose these two wonderful young ladies that I have had the pleasure of working with myself for a number of years. I also was able to graduate from middle school with Tenny as I went to the high school last year, and...
We have millions of viewers, Ms. Laffeer, don't get nervous.
You gotta start all over.
Because that's what these gentlemen deserve. So I have had, again, the pleasure of working with them in a variety of ways, whether it was through steam tank, when we worked together on a steam tank project in sixth grade. These young ladies and their parents have always come to our parent involvement events, and I think that has really encouraged and inspired them in their work. They have also benefited from a number of the programs that the Board of Education has supported, that Ms. Kita has supported in her role that I have mentioned prior as the Director Pemeritus through title funding. And so I can't begin to tell you what a testament it is to our community, to our programs, that these two young ladies have been recognized. They are very special in their eagerness to take advantage of every opportunity that has been presented to them. And it has totally been my honor and privilege to see them grow over the years and to be selected as our North Brunswick first pair of STEM scholars in the Governor's School. And they have already begun their work, and it is just so gratifying to see whether they participated in the ACT program, the eighth-grade algebra-based physics program, Physics Fundamentals. So again, what's everything truly special is they have grabbed onto every opportunity, including coming to last year's first STEM night at the high school and hearing the presentation about the Governor's STEM program. And so with that, congratulations. We are so very proud.
Thank you, thank you. And we have Tenny.
And Anye.
Anye, sorry. Oh, okay. We have our board vice president reading a resolution. Mom, Dad, who else? Is he a part of the family? They should be. Oh, they have base shoes. Yes, and we want you in front center and...
Congratulations.
And of course you want our principal and Ms. Laffeer, but...
Between the two rows?
Yes.
All right. You have a question to read the resolution? What's your idea? Yes. Mr. Now.
Oh, Mr. Now.
All right, so on this evening, be it resolved by the Board of Education that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Board of Education recognizes the efforts of all students and wishes to acknowledge its appreciation for its commitment to excellence, dedication, and extraordinary efforts representing their families, the school, and themselves in an exemplary manner. Now therefore be it resolved that this public acclaim be given to Tenny Olulua Obakaye for her acceptance through the 2026 Governor's STEM Scholars Program. This is a highly selective statewide initiative of the Research and Development Council of New Jersey that brings together New Jersey's top STEM students from high school through doctoral level to immerse them in the state's innovative ecosystem. Be it further resolved that Tenny shall be recognized appropriately and that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the permanent minutes of this board on this day, October 29, 2025. Congratulations. All right. North Brunswick Township Public Schools Resolution be it resolved by the Board of Education that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Board of Education recognizes the efforts of all students and wishes to acknowledge its appreciation for its commitment to excellence, dedication, and extraordinary efforts representing their families, the school, and themselves in an exemplary manner. Now therefore be it resolved that this public acclaim be given to Oyunoluwa Obakaye for her acceptance to the 2026 Governor's STEM Scholars Program. This is a highly selective statewide initiative of the Research and Development Council of New Jersey that brings together New Jersey's top STEM students from high school through the doctoral level to immerse them in the state's innovation ecosystem. Be it further resolved that Oyunoluwa Obakaye shall be recognized appropriately and that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the permanent minutes of this board on this day, October 29, 2025. Congratulations to you both.
Can we say a few words?
If you'd like to say a few words, yes.
Do you want to share maybe your first experience?
Neither sister, the girl first. The decision made.
I'm so grateful for this opportunity I was given to both I and my sisters, and I want to thank God for giving us this ability to be able to participate in this wonderful experience and as Governor's STEM Scholars for our North Brunswick Township. And I just want to also thank my parents, too, for always being our key motivation in everything that we do. And I want to thank Ms. Laffeer, Dr. Riley, and all my STEM teachers that took me through this journey altogether. And I also want to say, as my first journey as a North Brunswick Township Governor's STEM Scholars, it's been an interesting journey to start. It's just the beginning, and I'm soon to see what the rest will soon be. Right now, we're working on a research that's gonna be an innovative way to help people, help the healthcare, help people, and there's more to see when we gather more research. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I am very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm thankful to everyone, from my STEM teachers, my parents, God, and everyone who's supported me throughout this journey. The first experience of the STEM Scholars Program, I was really nervous, and we saw a panel of different individuals who were really respected in the STEM world. Right now, I and my team members, we are working on testing the waters for nitrate to fight against Baby Blue Syndrome. We're bringing this unrepresented community to help them, to give them more support, to help them not, to help them not be a victim of Baby Blue Syndrome.
I would just sum up and say one thing I neglected to say, which is, we should be aware that there were only 101 students selected across the entire state of New Jersey, across 19 counties. So if we think about those numbers, we truly are very well represented by these young women, and they're so proud.
So much. Thank you for coming out. Congratulations again. Thank you, Ms. ... Well, if you have Dr. Riley, you mentioned that, please, Dr. ... Oh, he's in the background. Please, come on, Dr. Riley. Another recognition and... Sometimes we run school district and do so many things for children, teachers, aides, support staff. Sometimes there's forgotten heroes, people who do simple things to help out the overall morale of school and just contributing their own time and effort. So tonight, we have a person we want to recognize, a person LP, named Andre, called by his first aide. He's one of our maintenance technicians in the district, and he's exceptional. These are the words of the principal, Mr. Dawson. Andre is knowledgeable, resourceful.
Professional, regularly, all the time. Goes above and beyond. The positive and new attitude Andre tackles challenges owes us his best support, staff and students at LP. We always depend on. One recent example of what's fantastic for Andre is, we have several self-contained classes at LP that need support. Students have a cubby store, their coats, bookbag. Andre noticed there was only 10 cubbies in his particular classroom, because they're required a certain size and very restricted size and appropriate. But we had 11 students late one Friday, late one Friday night, and most of us are unwinding at a long week. Ms. Laffeer, the vice principal, Mr. Dawson, were attorney at the office after a PTO event. They were surprised to see Andre working late on his own time, all that is hours. Personally build a cubby for the student. Andre explained that he wanted the student to feel welcome and part of the class and not be additional person in that class, just part of that. He wanted the person to construct a place for all of them. Knowing that the noise might disturb the class during the day, he decided to do it on his own time after hours. This is just one example of his kindness, work ethic, dedication in supporting our schools. We are so proud of him, as to celebrate Andre's wonderful contributions to LP and to our entire district. From the principal, way to go, Andre. And as superintendent, when I read this update, I always say, the principal's giving great news about our people, it's a little great thing. The board members read this, and they said, what a, we need to recognize Andre in public business.
Andre, come on up here.
Andre, I just want to make a brief note, because I was one of those board members that read about the work that you were doing, and I was just so inspired and encouraged because it's people like you that see what is needed and what's missing and the things that people are not pointing out. And the fact that you went out of your way to make sure that all children feel included is truly a testament to who you truly are as a person, and I'm just grateful for that vision. I'm grateful that you were willing to step out and help, so thank you so much. Read your resolution. For North Brunswick Township Public Schools, be it resolved by the Board of Education that the following resolution be approved, whereas the Board of Education recognizes the efforts of all its staff and wishes to acknowledge its appreciation for its commitment to excellence, dedication, and extraordinary efforts representing their school district and themselves in an exemplary manner. Now therefore be it resolved that this public acclaim be given to Andre Kolick, maintenance technician, for his extraordinary efforts going above and beyond by giving of his own personal time to efforts to improve the conditions of the classroom at Livingston Park School. Be it further resolved that Andre Kolick shall be recognized appropriately and that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the permanent minutes of this board. That is on today, October 29, 2025. Congratulations to you, and again, thank you again.
Andre, now it's not just a rumor, it's known by millions of people that you're such a wonderful employee and person.
So thank you for that. Thank you very much, I really appreciate you.
All right, thank you all for allowing that time to honor those wonderful students and staff to the Obakayes. You all are, I'm sure, very hopeful for the future. I am amazed at what you all have accomplished at such a young age. For you to be the two selected out of such a small, minute number is really a testament to a standard of excellence, and I hope that you all continue to reach for those soaring heights. So I wish you all the best of luck in your future.
Madam President, if you don't mind me adding, girls, congratulations, Andre, congratulations, but I'm just so inspired by their parents. You know, thank you, I really mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you for giving the girls the confidence, the guidance that you did to get them here. And I hope that other parents who are here right now, or as Dr. Z says, are a million of viewers, will get inspired to do the same, so other students can also push forward to, you know, get accepted into accelerated programs like this. I mean, it's very, it's a proud moment for North Brunswick that you guys did this, so thank you, parents, as well. So please, give them a round of applause.
All right, at this time, we are turning to our next presentation, which is going to be led by Ms. Mercy Chang, Director of Accountability and Special Programs, and Christopher Harry, our Director of People Personnel Services.
Good evening, everyone. Evening. It's a hard act to... Congratulations, ladies, and that was so special to hear, I almost shed a tear. But I am here to discuss the Dynamic Learning MAPS Assessment. This is my final presentation of 2025, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to talk into this. I hear that it's going out a little bit, so just let me know. I'm gonna be working here with my colleague, Dr. Harry. Good evening, board members, esteemed audience, people present here today. Thank you for joining us. This will be a brief presentation, as our Dynamic Learning MAPS Assessment is only administered to a very small, few, select number of students. And the first few slides, have a lot of information regarding the assessment, which is state-mandated, and I'll go over some of that, but I also just want to share something like just off the cuff, a little narrative about this assessment. The DLM, which is what we call it, is an alternative assessment. It's a system designed for students with the most significant cognitive disabilities who cannot meaningfully participate in general state assessments, i.e. our NJSLA assessment, even with the accommodations that are provided for students with that assessment. So a brief summary of that assessment. The purpose: to measure student progress toward academic standards in a way that reflects their unique learning needs and abilities. These are students with IEPs, and we teach them in very individualized ways, and so this assessment attempts to assess them in an individualized way. The structure of the assessment, it's, you don't even have to look up there, but what I'm saying is probably more relatable. It's based on a learning map model, which represents knowledge as a network of connected concepts and skills rather than a single linear path. The subjects, primarily ELA and math. Some students do take the science in specific grades. The approach: it assesses what students know and can do by tracking their individual learning pathways and providing instructionally-relevant information. And how do we use it? Well, lots of states use it, New Jersey is one of them, and it is aligned with college and career readiness standards, but it is just one measure of how our students are performing. Obviously, the IEP is our main determinant of how we want to meet these students' needs. We do get some good data back from this, but it's not data that we use to compare students to their peers, because it's a very individualized assessment. The logistics. So this window is wide, like all the other windows that we've discussed, because these students are tested one-to-one with their teacher, who provides them their instruction. And the method is these things called testlets, and they have unlimited amount of time to do them, but it's really about a five-to-15-minute assessment, which is appropriate. And the student must have started a test in order to receive a cumulative score. So this year, we did have, I believe, 18 science, I just want to find my number. 58 ELA in math, I believe, and where is that?
48 and 16.
Thank you, Ms. James. 48 ELA in math, students tested, and 16 students tested in science. Science is only for 11th grade and 5th grade. So like all the other assessments that we've talked about, the DLM has its own proficiency levels, and those are not numbers, those are indicators. We have students at the emerging level, approaching the target, at target, or advanced. The test does generate raw, no raw scores or percentages, it just pops kids into these four levels, and results are based on the student's probability of mastering a particular skill. Typically, students statewide are kind of performing at the emerging level, but you'll see this year, we did have some nice improvement in all of the subjects, particularly ELA and math, so we were really proud of that. Dr. Harry is gonna go over the quantitative data. I just wanted to make sure I explained the... Are you doing it?
Go, use your buttons to go back.
You broke it.
Sorry, Mrs. Kita. Thanks for viewing, it is not done yet. I must have hit a button. I just wanted to make sure that I...
Ladies, can you help, STEM scholars?
STEM ladies, help me out here. Definitely not my shrunksu. Wanted to review the logistics of the assessment, and then don't want to steal the special ed department's thunder, especially with the positive results, make sure that Dr. Harry and his team of supervisors, resource teachers, inclusion teachers, replacement teachers, get all the credit that they so deserve. Thank you, Mrs. Kita. That is exactly the right slide. We're gonna go over the ELA scores in grade bands, grades three to five first, six to 12, and then for each, six to eight and 11, and then math, and then science.
Thank you, Mercy. All right, good evening, everybody, and thank you for allowing me to present the 2025 DLM results for our special education students. We're very proud to share that our students participated in the 2025 DLM assessments demonstrating meaningful growth across all subject areas, and that might be the first time that that's occurred. So the first slide you'll see is for grades three through five. English Language Arts Literacy, there were 20 students that were tested. 55% were at emerging, 20% approaching, 25% at target, and 0% were advanced. We looked at English Language Arts Literacy grades six to eight and 11. There were 28 students. 15% were emerging, 14% were approaching, 32% were at target, and 4% were advanced. That's significant for us. Moving on to mathematics, third through fifth grade, there were 20 students that were tested. 55% were at emerging, 10% approaching, 35% at target, and 0% advanced. Mathematics grades six to eight and 11, 28 students again. 82% were emerging, 14% approaching, 0% at target, and again, 4% were advanced. So again, significant improvement for us this year. Look at science, grades five, eight, and 11. There were 18 students, is that 16 students? 18 students. 16% were emerging, 23% approaching, 11% at target, and 0% advanced. These gains reflect the dedication of our students, the commitment of our educators, that's the teachers and the aides in the classroom with them, and the support of our families, of course. Together, as a team, we all continue to ensure that every learner, no matter what their path is, has the opportunity to grow, achieve, and shine. So the next steps... We'll do the increases, yes. In general, in general, students perform better than in '24, '25. There was a 6% increase in students performing at target or advanced in English Language Arts. Six percent increase in students performing at target or advanced in English Language Arts. There was a nine percent increase in students performing at target or advanced in mathematics. One percent increase in students performing at target or advanced in science. So what are our next steps? What are our conclusions? What are the interventions that we're going to continue on with? We're going to continue to monitor progress towards students' specific IEP goals through their collaboration between the child study team and the teaching staff, the aides, and the parents. It's a whole collaborative effort with the design of unique IEPs with goals and objectives for each student. We're going to continue to provide targeted instructional language arts and math at the student's academic level based on their unique individualized education plans. We're going to engage in instructional walkthroughs at each level to provide staff and administrators with valuable feedback that's pertinent to our special education programs. Are there any questions?
Dr. Harry, I would just like to, on behalf of myself and my colleagues, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you very much. It's really our staff, our teachers, our assistants, our MBTHs, our BCPs, our supervisors, and it goes across the district. It's our principals, like Mr. Neller, that work with us. It's a big team effort.
It is, but it starts at the top, and you empower your staff. So, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Yes, I definitely would like to echo those sentiments, and I think we're all happy to see the positive increase in the numbers compared to last year. So that's a job well done, and we look forward to seeing more progress. And thank you for being a leader that acknowledges that it is a team effort, especially as it relates to our vulnerable population in special education. So much appreciated.
Thank you very much.
I just want to share with the board how I haven't seen Mr. Harry this excited. Passion.
Always passionate.
Yeah. So thank you, Dr. Harry, for your leadership, and thank you, Ms. Chang, for your involvement with the testing. You take care of all children, every classroom, every day, and the most vulnerable sometimes. We overlook them, and I thank you for not overlooking them and keeping us informed of the great work.
You know, the goal here is all means all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we are moving to item number six on our agenda. Mr. Ali, if you could be so kind to take item number six for us?
We'll do, Madam President, oh, Madam Vice President, sorry. I would like to make a motion to approve the following meeting minutes. The regular meeting minutes from September 24th, 2025. The executive meeting minutes from September 24th. The conference meeting minutes from September 17th. And the executive meeting from September 17th.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All the meeting minutes are approved.
Okay, do we have any communications this evening?
None at this time, Madam President.
All right, we are going to, if there's any old business or new business, seeing none, we will now move to our administrative report, Dr. Zakowski.
Thank you again, Madam Vice President, and good evening again to all family, guests, or viewers tonight. I'm just happy my report is centered around some wonderful awards that the high school, Mr. Neller is just walking out with the families. But I do want to continue to highlight some of the great work that's going on at the high school and all our schools. MBTHS received two awards for their 24, 25-year book, The Dataless, from the Garden State Scholastic Press Association this week. Received third place for our academic spread, Building Equations from our Math Department, and first place Gold Award overall. So we're very proud of our yearbook advisor, Ms. Rebecca Roundtree, and the yearbook staff. And of course, the staff and our students together, very seriously doing a wonderful job for this yearbook award. So again, thank you to all staff and students. Once again, I see Ms. Dr. Riley back there. It's her AP, and it's titled, you'll see in our bulletin and our communications, "Our AP Students Delivery Once Again in 2025." "We are pleased to share the spring 2025 administration of College Board Advanced Placement Exams." An amazing, and this is a great testimony to the support from our board, our staff, a vision of opening up our College Board AP Access for All exams. What I mean by that is, years ago, there were some parameters. And as a result of some studies, Dr. Ellis was involved in some, you know, surveys that we found out why students were not able to access AP opportunities. The board supported by supporting and financing AP exams. We're very grateful for that. They had AP, we like to say, boot camp for students who never had an AP course. Because with AP exams, you take, you study the course. It's a very prescriptive curriculum. And college boards like that because there's no grade inflation. They control the curriculum and the assessment. So the staff is held to high accountability. But you have to take the test. And we found out many of our students weren't taking it because, you know, it's a financial burden. So the commitment, I thank the board again for committing those resources, sustaining those resources. And here's the greatest news. Three hundred and thirty-six students worked hard to prove they had master's college-level material. We had three hundred and thirty-six students in our AP exams. The Board of Education is so proud of this, as I am, as superintendent. And then of all the expansion AP programming at MBTHS, our district offers the opportunity for twenty-four different AP courses. A few years ago, when I was here, it was thirteen, fifteen, and slowly continued to grow. I commend the staff. As I, when I, since I've come back, it continues to grow. So that strategy, that hard work, is continuing to flourish. So you should know, students are earning college credits because when you score three or higher, it's accepted by many universities. And in this case, listen to this stat. AP Bio, ninety-six percent of our students in AP Bio scored three or higher. That's nearly everyone. That's amazing. Calculus, ninety-three percent, three or higher. AP Language and Composition, ninety-two percent. AP Spanish Language and Culture, one hundred percent. AP US History, which we all know is probably the foremost, toughest, most rewarding course ever. I used to teach that. Ninety-five percent, a little biased, I have to admit. This cross-section of exams demonstrate the well-roundedness of our AP program, our faculty, our staff, and most of all, students. So thank you again. I want the millions of viewers to know that how proud we are to see this execution of this wonderful support and opportunity for our students. And it doesn't happen unless our staff is committed and we have students that are, you know, flourishing under their leadership in the classroom. So thank you again. Highlighting the well-roundedness of the opportunities at MBTHS, our choir attended the annual Rowan University Tenor Bass Base Festival. Students from the choir attended the university festival to rehearse and perform with over seven hundred singers from the tri-state area. The students worked throughout the day on an excellent repertoire with Dr. Christopher Thomas of Rowan University, Vinroy Brown of Westminster Choir College, a graduate of MBTHS, culminating in a powerful performance for all the teachers in attendance at Rowan University. Amazing opportunity. And let's not forget, it doesn't end there because our well-rounded students are so talented. We have our Alchemist Theater students who will be performing the Fall Performance, Almost Maine, on November 14th and 15th, seven o'clock. Come out, see our talented students perform, just a, you know, public service announcement. But again, we certainly are proud of all our students and all their talents and all the opportunities given. I want to thank our township partners. Highlighted in our BOE bulletin going out to our parents and to our Board of, I mean, to our council, the mayor, is that across the district, students benefit from the many opportunities offered by our township partners. In just the past month, we had student volunteer at park cleanup, organized by the Police Department in North Brunswick, the Recreation Department in North Brunswick, the Fire Department, the Volunteer Fire Department of North Brunswick, who also visit our schools and talk about fire safety. And the North Brunswick Food Bank helped organize food drives at many of our schools. And our students on the Municipal Alliance, which is a very, you know, gear for volunteerism and community service, volunteered at Heritage Day, which was a big hit, a wonderful Saturday evening. And I know two of our board members sit down and give their time to the committee, and we thank you for your endless volunteering because our students are contributing as well and appreciating your role modeling. We work to continue every day with, to work every day with our township to help our students feel the sense of community and really understand North Brunswick is not just a great place to learn, it's a great place to work and live. So thank you again to our township partners and our many volunteers modeling for our students that giving back, paying it forward already at a young age. So we're really impressed. As you heard from Ms. Chang tonight, I want to thank Ms. Chang, and I know your partner because you pulled her into many, you know, that job description Dr. Ellis said, you see everything else that we need you to do. You helped write the grant, that IMPACT grant. Were you part of that grant?
Kate Twire.
And Kate Twire, I'm sorry, I do apologize. But I know you were, Mercy gave you some credit as well. The Instructional Materials for Professional Advancement and Coherent Teaching. We love, you know... Acronyms in education. So it's another acronym. The IMPACT, the Instructional Materials for Professional Advancement and Coherent Teaching. It's a competitive funding, grant funding, opportunity design, support school districts in purchasing and implementing high-quality instructional materials for literacy. As you know, the literacy standards have been changed and revised. And so this gave us an opportunity. And the beautiful thing is, if you remember in July, when we had special meetings when I was first coming back, I announced that we just got received from the Department of Ed, new grants. And so we're going to go after them. We may only have two weeks to do it. Well, a few people, as I mentioned, Kate Twire, Ms. Chang, they rolled up their sleeves and they were awarded. One of the districts awarded $198,000 towards the purchase of new high-quality instructional materials and for materials for grades five through eight. And they've begun vetting all these new materials. Grant acquisition, again, was led through this collaborative effort with... When I tell you it was two weeks in the summer, like, I want to, you know, highlight that because typically you get a little more time to do grants, but we didn't have much time, but we were so very successful. We look forward to hearing the results of that, you know, efforts of the grants and how it was applied and, of course, executed to make a difference for our students. And so, Madam Vice President, that concludes my report. And we'll depart on top of all the wonderful things going on.
Yes, that was wonderful to hear. Thank you, Dr. Zakowski. We are now going to turn to our student reports. It looks like Ms. Montero is here, and we are down one, but let's hear it, Ms. Montero.
Thank you. A lot to report tonight and no one to share it with, so we'll see how this goes.
We like that, right?
SGO, about two weeks ago, SGO sponsored a very successful homecoming week. Everyone participated in various spirit days, and we held our Fall Pep Rally, where the sophomores took home the Spirit Cup, which always ends up being the sophomores or the juniors. And the juniors won Powder Puff for the third, or no, they didn't. They might win Powder Puff for the third time, so we're watching out for that one. Two grades love to do everything. That is the week we go back to break. At the football game, our homecoming court was crowned. And that Saturday evening, we held our homecoming dance. The theme was Around the World, so we decorated for different cities. There was like cities in like Asia. There was like a safari section, a jungle section. We had the Taj Mahal, and then there was like a little airport section, so it looked really good. And this year, tickets sold out in three days, which seems to have been the average in the past couple of years. So we'll see if that gets lower next year. The Latin American Club did several different things this month to honor Hispanic Heritage Month. There were daily announcements which highlighted members of the Hispanic community that have made an impact in our country and communities. And there was also a wonderfully done display case in the Commons, a Hispanic Heritage Spirit Week. And members of the Latin American Club provided bread and coffee to the teachers during parent-teacher conferences. The Class of 2026 and Student Government held an outdoor movie night on the football field to watch Spider-Man Far From Home. Over three hundred students attended this event and had a great time. And I'm sure we can all assume that not many people actually watched the movie. Everyone was just kind of hanging out. That always makes it a ton of fun. So far, with the help of Homecoming Week, SGO has raised over five hundred of our $5,000 goal for this year's charity, Children's Specialized Hospital. And we're only two months into the year, so hopefully we'll be beating that goal soon. Members of our South Asian Cultural Association created a wonderful display in the Commons in celebration of Diwali. And members of our Care to Walk Club participated in Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk at Middlesex County College, and they raised over $777 as a team. So a lot of cool things have been happening at high school. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Montero. It is amazing to hear that you students work hard and play hard as well. And it's just great to hear about all the different cultural initiatives that are happening. So thank you so much for your report. We are now going to turn to committee reports, and we are going to start with our education report. Mr. Ali.
Okay, thank you. So the Education Committee met on Wednesday, October 15th. And we have a few items that are on the agenda, and we have a few other items that weren't that we discussed. So we have our, I guess we just finished our NJSLA testing today. So we tested all students in grades four to 10 for ELA, English Language Arts, as well as students in grade forty-eight. And Eddie, student who took Algebra I, II, and Geometry last year for math, they were tested. We received a presentation from Mr. Neller and Coach Grimes, or Mr. Grimes, however you want to call it. And we're really just trying to work on ways to support our student athletes transitioning from high school to college, especially if they plan to participate in college sports. We had updates from Mr. Pazner and Carrie and Egan about what's going on in our school district pertaining to pre-k. So we have currently ten preschool providers in town. And we have about thirty-six integrated classrooms, six preschool disabled classrooms, and we have four ABA classes. So we have a total of forty-six classes, which equals to about 543 students. So that's huge. We've grown, not we, but we, as a school district, we have really grown this program. So that's amazing. I'm sure it's helping a lot of families. And for curricular instruction technology, we had some updates from Ms. Barrett around our elementary math. And we're just really trying to refocus that for this year and really seeing how we can improve. So we were piloting a new program, and that has already shown an impact in some of our students across the district, which is amazing because math can always be a challenge sometimes. It was for me when I was younger. We have some updates about our ESL data review and just goal settings from Ms. Morales. So we had some additional meetings pertaining to that, as well as we had some updates for the Northwest Evaluation Association. And that's pertaining to our MAP coaching for professional learning, which is essentially, it was a conference where some of our staff were able to learn and really just find strategies to improve and help grow some of our MAP data and really how we could use that to improve the outcomes in the school district. And Dr. Zakowski mentioned earlier about the IMPACT grant. And that's really pertaining to our task forces to find ways to really help improve the outcomes for ELA. We additionally had a few policy readings. So we had our first reading for policy 5410, which is Promotion and Retention. So that was revised, and it's going to be replacing our old policy. And secondary, we had a second reading for our curricular requirements. So policy 2422 will be replaced and just updated, and that's pertaining to comprehensive health and physical education. And lastly, we have some good news. Well, we had a lot of good news tonight, but this is additional good news, that we will be collaborating with the University of Delaware Career and Technical Education Department to really help improve our marketing entrepreneurial pathways within our business academy at the district. So that's going to be great. It's really going to give students more pathways and just views to look at careers differently past high school. And that's all from my report.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. We are next going to move to our HR committee. Dr. Patel, if you could please.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Vice President. The Human Resources Community Relations Committee met on Tuesday, October 28th, to discuss various personnel topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are either retiring or resigning, the board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. There are several new staff hires for the 2025-2026 school year on tonight's agenda. We welcome... We welcome all those new members to our district, and we look forward to having you work with us here in North Brunswick. We also discussed several reassignments which are also on tonight's agenda, and we are looking forward to our staff taking on these new roles. As of our committee meeting, any remaining vacancies for the 2025-2026 school year continue to be in the interview stages and will be posted until they're filled. All of our current openings can be found on our district website, social media pages, and posted in each of our buildings. For any teaching positions, alternate route, and traditional route, candidates are both encouraged to apply. We discuss any current and upcoming leaves of absences and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term subs, or six teaching periods. Lastly, the committee had a second reading of the following policies, administrative employment contracts, and notification of promotion, new job, and transfer opportunities. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Patel. We're moving now to our Business Operations Committee. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Business Operations Committee met on Tuesday, October 28th. A presentation was made by our construction manager who provided an update on work related to the referendum. On the agenda this evening, you'll find the following items, finance items 3K, 3L, and 3N, related to referendum updates, related to window upgrades, bathroom upgrades, and the dehumidifier and heat pump for the pool at MBTHS. Finance items 3D and 3E related to change orders for Livingston Park Parking Project and bathroom renovations at the high school. Finance 3M related to pool rental contracts. Also, first reading for policy item 1A, P8600 and P8601. Second and final readings for policy 1B, bylaws 0143, 0173, 0174, 0177, PNR 1570, Policy 1620, and Policy 6220, as well as miscellaneous items 1E related to food services, administrative audit. That's everything for the Business Operations Committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. And Ms. Keith, is there anything for negotiations this evening?
None at this time, Madam Vice President.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, at this time, I am going to ask Mr. Carter if you can take number nine.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
All the reports are accepted.
All right, and we are going to take a review of our agenda for this evening, and we are on presently Pages Two. We're going to just take a look at Pages Two and Three. Any changes that have been made in recent, like, the past 24 hours would be noted in bold. We're looking at Pages Four and Five. Turning to Six and Seven. Eight and Nine. Pages 10 and 11. 12 and 13. 14 and 15. 16 and 17. Pages 18 and 19. 20 and 21. And concluding with Pages 22 and 23. Okay, moving now to our public session on agenda items only. At this time, members of the public may now address the Board as it relates to agenda items only, and if they do so, come forward, they have three minutes. Okay, seeing none at this time, can Ms. Keith, can you please take number 12 for us?
Yes, Madam Vice President, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Mr. Singh, if you could please take item number 13.
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items. Personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items 1, 2, 3, policy, and transportation. Second.
I will do roll call. Mr. Ali.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Singh.
Yes.
And Mr. Wen.
Yes.
All the resolutions and motions are approved. Okay.
We are now moving to our next public session. Members of the public may now address the Board on any matter. If you do so, come forward, you would please state your name, and you will be given three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Beth Pasner. I am the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. I just wanted to express my thanks to the Board for all the recognition of our staff members, especially, you know, tonight to see a staff member on the presentation part. It really means a lot. Our staff works hard, they're so dedicated, and, you know, it's really nice to see the recognition. I know that you do it when it's retirements, and you do it when it's Governor Teacher, like, Governor Educator of the Year, an ESP of the Year, right? But to see it, you know, randomly is a really nice treat, and I just wanted to express our appreciation for the recognition of our staff members and all that they do. We are on break next week, and I wish everyone a much well-rested, deserved break, so have a good night.
Thank you, Ms. Pasner.
Thank you.
Seeing any others? Okay, at this time, Mr. Wen, can you please take number 14?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to close the public portion of this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
All right, Dr. Zakowski.
Yeah, Madam President, and we had, in the back, we have copies of the 26-27 school calendar. I just, it was hard to put on last minute because we've been going through several conferences and collaborations, and I do, I see Ms. Pasner, the President, I want to thank her because we went through a difficult, not a difficult, but we had some challenging metrics to our 26-27 school calendar because of construction projects, and we had to work together to come up with a opportunity to maybe finish a little bit earlier in June without really overhauling the entire calendar that's been utilized by North Brunswick School District in their holidays and certain breaks. So, one of the ways, and I want to talk about the process in this collaboration, we asked Dr. Ellis to create surveys, and we created four opportunities to typical schedule, you know, a schedule where we get out at June 9th, one that we get out at June 11th, and one that we will be getting out, getting out June 12th, and we sent it out to the staff, and we asked the staff, and we informed the staff, this is really a collaborative effort because the Board is well-aware of this construction project, summers are short, and it's not this summer, but the following summer will be the closing out of the $64 million project that we have ongoing over the next two years, renovating bathrooms, windows, repointing, and so on. So, with that being said, I want to thank our staff because of the nearly 1,200 staff members, 580 responded. That's a great sampling survey return, and so it was taken very serious. And the calendar you have before you that I'm recommending, that we have a motion to accept, we had some results that we discussed at committee, and more than 50% were willing, our staff, willing to do something different than their regular calendar. So, I'm very happy, and speaking with Ms. Pasner, we're going to make some addendums to this as a trial year of certain things, moving workdays, flex days around, and so on, and we'll have an addendum to our current contract coming up, but we want to have approved this calendar so we can get out to families and prepare them for the 26-27 school year, which will begin in, you know, July 1 of 2026, it's not too far away. So, we're done with this long process. I do want to commend everyone for participating and giving us some insight. So, I would love for a board member, as you all have been privy to this calendar, to make a motion to accept and approve the 26-27 calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar for the 26-27 school year.
Second.
Oh, boy. Dr. Patel, I'll give you that one.
She hit the button first, I heard her.
I'm going to go through and just do a roll call, just make this really official. Mr. Ali.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Singh.
Yes.
And Mr. Wen.
Yes.
We have a new calendar for 26-27.
Thank you.
Board members, Madam President, Vice President.
That is looking ahead to next school year, as Dr. Zakowski mentioned. Thank you for your vision and making sure that we're doing all that we need to do as far as the referendum work, and making sure that there is enough summertime to get that done. We are now going to make a motion to move into closed session, whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education, that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows, personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above-stated subject matter shall be made public at such time as a need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take place immediately.
Second.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Closed session, we will go. All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Your sons are ready for Saturday?
Uh, yes. So here's the picture of my brother, this is my goddaughter. Right? So my sister-in-law says, "What are you doing now? You're still taking pictures?" Because I wanted to get a picture of his ponytail. Look at the size of it. I said, "Greg, horses don't have tails that long." Millions of viewers. This was Jonathan Bush reporting out.
All right, we are back from executive session. We have a motion.
Some move? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? We are back in session.
I'd like to move to approve the termination of employee 8256 effective November 4, 2025.
Second.
I'm going to take roll call on that, please. Mr. Ali.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Keith.
Yes.
Dr. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Singh.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
We have a new calendar for '26, '27.
Thank you.
Board of Members, Madam President, Vice President?
That is looking ahead to next school year as Dr. Zakowski mentioned. Thank you for your vision and making sure that we're doing all that we need to do as far as the referendum work and making sure that there is enough summertime to get that done. We are now going to make a motion to move into closed session whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter shall be made public. At such time as a need for nondisclosure no longer exists, this resolution shall take place immediately.
Second.
Motion.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Closed session, we will go. All right.
Good night, everybody.